Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty and I will call this meeting of the Planning Commission to order. The first item on the agenda is adoption of the agenda. Staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Commissioners?
No.
Is there a motion?
So moved. Second?
By Chris John and Wad? Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Second item on the agenda is to approve the minutes from the January thirteenth, twenty twenty Planning Commission meeting. Staff, any changes?
None from staff.
Commissioners?
I do have a change. In the adoption of the agenda from the thirteenth, I am one of them that approved it. The funny thing is I would have approved it had I been there, but I wasn't there, so.
Okay, thank you.
That was supposed to be Public Commissioner Wad.
I was there.
Okay.
And you approved it.
I must have.
There you go.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the amended minutes?
Move. I move that we approve the amended minutes.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Motion carries. Okay, the third item on the agenda is a discussion of what the Planning Commission's twenty twenty work plan, which is presented by Ms. Madden.
Thank you. Good evening. So the included twenty twenty work plan that's in your packet has not changed from the December ninth Planning Commission meeting when we first discussed this. There was some discussion at that meeting of maybe moving around some of the deadlines for or estimated completion dates for some of the items, but with the finishing up and wrapping up of the transit-oriented development ordinance and the parking ordinance, we didn't move anything up further into the year just so we can finish up some of those twenty nineteen items. So since it has not changed, I can still stand for some questions about it, but otherwise staff is looking for a motion of recommendation to the city council. And then at that city council meeting, the February eighteenth meeting, the Chair, Chair Henderson, would be presenting the twenty twenty work plan at that date.
Great, thanks. Commissioners, any questions? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the work plan.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay. Okay, motion carries and I will be presenting this item then at the February eighteenth City Council meeting. The fourth item on the agenda is to hold a public hearing on the application of the city of Burnsville for an amendment to city code Title X zoning, Chapter seven, twelve, fourteen, fifteen, twenty-two, twenty-two C, and twenty-four to make minor amendments relating to clarity and cohesion on topics including, but not limited to residential trash screening, residential net density standards, standing seam metal roofs, collector road references, and allowable uses in commercial, industrial, and mixed-use districts presented by Ms. Madden.
Thank you. So the ordinance that's enclosed in your packet has some very minor changes to various sections of the zoning code. So when we come through and do housekeeping ordinance amendments, typically about once a year, staff keeps a running list of things that other people around the city or maybe applicants have noticed that are mistakes or are not consistent with one another, small changes, as well as if there's anything smaller that is a council direction for us to change that may not change or not have need of a full study on a work plan or as a staff initiative, then it would go on the housekeeping list. So there are just a few chapters that are changed or proposed to be changed in this evening's amendment. So I have grouped them in my presentation tonight in a different order that is in your background packet, so I apologize if that is confusing and let me know if you have any questions. So some of the smaller changes here, we would consider vocabulary changes. So as you may remember from the November twenty-fifth Planning Commission public hearing, there was a lot of discussion on residential trash screening and those changes. They are not proposed to be changed based on the actual direction of the Planning Commission and the council from those meetings, but based on reviewing definitions within the zoning ordinance, we do refer to it as a principal structure rather than primary. So we changed it to be consistent with vocabulary elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. The next section, there is a section in the special requirements for multifamily districts chapter where we refer to a streetway as a thoroughfare. And in our zoning ordinance and comp plan, there is no thoroughfare street designation. It's instead it's known as a collector in our vernacular, so that is proposed to be changed as well. Based on the adoption of the twenty forty comprehensive plan, the net densities of our different residential zoning districts were changed as we rezoned many properties to mixed use. So this proposed change to the net density formula is reflective of what's already been adopted in the twenty forty comprehensive plan. We also created a new category separating out R-one zone and R-two zone. Even though they're both considered low-density residential in the comprehensive plan, the formulas of the mathematics based on minimum lot size for those two different districts is different. So we wanted to make sure that the math was consistent. In the left side of the screen here, you can see some changes to reference this new chart. So it used to reference a square footage of lot per unit with the new density changes in the mixed-use zoning district. Those, that math was not consistent anymore. So we are now referencing directly to the table rather than creating two different places for an applicant to have to do that formula for density. The other general category of the changes that are proposed in this ordinance amendment are related to allowable uses. So last year, the city council gave staff direction to make changes to allow standing seam metal roofs in single-family residential districts. So as you can see on the left side here, that's been changed in both the single-family zoning district and the R-two two-family zoning district. It was already allowable roofing material in the R-one A rural residential district. On the right side, the top change here, we're removing liquor store as a conditional use in the B-three zoning district because of changes made actually in twenty seventeen, which made liquor store permitted use in B-two. All uses that are permitted in B-two are permitted in B-three, so there was an inconsistency there. The second change, hotels, motels, and bed and breakfast establishments. If you may remember, this came up during the twenty forty rezoning of the properties that were re-guided in the twenty forty comp plan, that there were properties that had hotels on them that were being rezoned to mixed use, but a hotel was not a permitted use in mixed use. It was permitted in Heart of the City, which is the city's other mixed-use district, so we've gone ahead and mimicked that chapter so that hotels are a permitted use in mixed use as well. And then the last change is to the I-one industrial district where we are removing references to storage not being allowed in open storage. Open storage would already be a conditional use in the I-one zoning district, so it was a change that proposed to be changed because it doesn't need to be stated in an additional area that open storage is not permitted without a conditional use permit. So staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend to the city council approval of the proposed ordinance amendment as presented. This will be a public hearing and I can answer any questions about some of these changes if you, if you have any.
Great, thank you. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Okay. Sure, go ahead.
Red, I can't reach that. I have a couple of questions. Can we go back to the, I think it was the first slide? Maybe the next one there with the R-one zone and the R-two zone. So can you just help differentiate the difference between R-one zone and R-two zone in layman's terms? Because when I see two to four point three five units per acre, would I read that as any residential lot could have up to two units is? I guess, can you just help me understand the difference between those zones?
So the, what this has to do and reflects back to is minimum lot size. So a lot in the R-one single-family zoning district is not necessarily an acre. The minimum lot size is ten thousand square feet for a single-family zoning district. And so the two to four point three five goes on the minimum lot size of ten thousand square foot. And then there's some lots within the city that are deviations below that minimum lot size. So that's why the four point three five times ten thousand doesn't get you exactly to an acre, but that's where that comes from. The R-two zoning district is the two-family, so twin homes or duplex, if you will. And single-family homes are also a permitted use in that zoning district. So, but its range is larger because the minimum lot size in the R-two zoning district is about seventy-five hundred square feet rather than ten thousand or an acre. And the reason why it's lower for the R-one A rural residential is because it's, the minimum lot size is one to two acres depending on if they're on public utilities or not.
Okay.
Is that how?
Yes, thank you. And then the second question I had was regarding the hotel motel use in the mixed zone. We've approved some projects in the last couple of years that are mixed that don't necessarily fall within Heart of the City or transit-oriented development type of area. The couple that I'm thinking of are by the Lutheran Church on County Road forty-two and the Methodist Church on, let's just say thirty-five. Cause I can't remember the front intro is called there. And those were both zoned as mixed use. Is there consideration about those, those single properties and eliminating the ability for them to have hotels on those since those were not initially approved with that type of use in mind? Or could they now, five years from now or next year for that matter, change their development and decide we want this to be a hotel rather than senior apartments?
So with it being a permitted use, all of those properties that are zoned mixed use would be allowed to do that with that, with this change, as a side. So hotels are a permitted use in many of our commercial districts as well, not just our Heart of the City districts. So our B-three zoning district and our B-four zoning district are already, so those are general business and highway commercial, those are already allowable areas where a hotel would be permitted.
Okay, I'll save my comments for after the public hearing.
Anything else, guys? Okay, then I will open the public hearing at six forty-five. If there's anybody from the audience wishing to speak, please come to the podium. Nope, okay. We will close the public hearing then at six forty-three. Commissioners, other comments, questions? Commissioner Timmerman?
So the comments that I have about that are are significant because we heard from a lot of neighbors on both of those projects and on other projects where the mixed zoning was approved in what had previously been a residential zoned area. And I think a lot of the neighbors were concerned that four and five-story buildings were being developed in those areas. And I think that they would be considerably concerned if they now knew that those properties could be retrofitted into hotels. So I have great concerns about all mixed zoning having hotels, motels as an allowable use. I understand that, you know, in Heart of the City and other commercial areas, it's been a permitted use, but we have a few projects and maybe we could look at, you know, what those individual property projects are that have been approved in the last few years and see if there's a way that we can at least look at this. Because I, I think a, a public hearing to look at a single line adjustment in the zoning, I, I just don't think it's fair to do this in a, in a housekeeping change to the, to the city code. So I, I just feel like there should be more discussion about some of these smaller mixed-zone properties. And I'm not comfortable with some of them becoming hotels.
Commissioner John?
I'm trying to picture some of the mixed-use areas that we have. Do we, we don't have a map or anything available, do we, that we would be able to take a look at to understand?
I can pull one up if you'll give me a moment.
Sure.
I can pull the zoning map up. So the properties that are this paler pink tu noir color are mixed use. And so that area would be, so there's the medical campus area. There's the Burnsville Center area. There is the previously approved Healy Rammy projects, the two-hundred-and-fifty-unit apartment building and the proposed or conceptual apartment building and townhomes that would be to the south. There's the recently rezoned property here, which has not been reflected on the map yet. The Valley Ridge CDA, Dakota County CDA property here. There's some more shopping north of the medical campus area that is zoned mixed use. There is the Burnsville Transit Station and some surrounding properties that are zoned mixed use. There, this is a retail shopping center zoned mixed use here. You may know it as, oh, what is there? I'll come back to that. And then this corner of thirteen and Difley is on mixed use as well. Heart of the City is not in the mixed-use zoning district, but it is a type of mixed-use development. And then this stretch in question here that has hotel properties on it that is also zoned mixed use currently. There may be more in the future that would be rezoned to mixed use.
A few of those do have hotels in them already, obviously.
Yes.
Which areas are you concerned with in?
Can we zoom in towards the triangle? We might be able to see all or the two properties and just pull it up a little. So the one that she's just, well, was just north of the Healy Rammy property, a lot of the residents south of one forty-fifth there and along, is that Grand, I believe? Really expressed concerns about that particular project. And frankly, I think it's a great project the way it stands, but I, I think that we're doing a disservice to those residential neighborhoods by now after the fact adding the, you know, the condition that a hotel could be built in that property. And then if we go south to Crystal Lake Road, where the property is just white right now, it's not actually in that pink color. Again, we had a lot of conversations with residents along Crystal Lake or on Crystal Lake and neighboring properties. That particular property had previously been zoned R-one.
Yes.
And so it was, again, it's another great property. It's another great project and development for the city. But I don't think that the sellers or anybody on the lake would have just sat back and said, yeah, we're okay with the hotel being here. And so I feel like we're, I feel like we're holding a public hearing without allowing people in these particular, at least these two particular project areas, to have an adequate say in what could happen to these properties down the road.
So Sarah, let me ask you a question. If, say for example, in the white property, just plain what-if, if somebody wants to come in and put a hotel and, you know, it is changed to mixed use, that application will come before Planning Commission? No, because it is permitted?
If it is a permitted use, it would go straight to building permit unless they were requesting any deviations from the city code or let's say they need a conditional use permit for the grading plan or something like that. If there's some sort of other land use clearance that's triggered, then it would come before it. But as a permitted use, if it meets all requirements, it would be the straight to the building permit process.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Is there a way to identify, like we have R-one, R-two, et cetera? Would these be able to break out in that type of way? Mixed zoning one, mixed zoning two, sort of a thing where we could differentiate between?
So theoretically, yes. So you may know that Heart of the City is separated out into HOC one and HOC two. That would be a pretty large-scale change to the zoning ordinance. That would be something that would require study. It would likely be a work plan type of item. A very, a large intake that is something that you can request or that you can suggest as your role as a planning commissioner, that that's something that we look at with our mixed-use zoning district or that could be brought up while the transit-oriented development ordinance is continuing to be discussed. But would not be part of any action that you would take on what's before you this evening.
Right. Otherwise, I really don't understand, I don't think there's another way to get around that, is it? Having that available if it's going to be zoned as a mixed use.
Go ahead, yeah.
If we leave it the way it currently stands, it's still a conditional use, correct?
It's not a use listed at all in mixed use.
Can we add it as a conditional or some other type of?
You may. You could, as part of your recommendation to the city council, adjust the ordinance that staff has prepared and move around things such as that.
So if it were a conditional use and somebody came to one of these, these pink properties and said, I want to build a hotel, what would be the process for them to do that then?
So at that point, it would be a development application to the planning department. The conditional use permit would hold a public hearing and go before Planning Commission and City Council.
Commissioner Wad?
I have a question. So if we make a change like that and, and call the hotels conditional use in mixed, you know, conditional, a CUP in a condition, in a mixed district, is there additional cost for the developer to go through the CUP process as opposed to just staying? You know, if it's, what you're proposing is that hotels will be allowed if they stay in their lane, they don't need to come before the planning commission. Is there a fee difference in terms of their development?
So development applications such as a conditional use permit does have a, an application fee and a escrow amount that is used to, to move the application through the process. So that totals five thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars with fee plus the escrow amount combined.
Okay.
But it would not change building permit fees or the, once it gets to that stage, it would still be standardized?
Yeah, I was just concerned that we're, you know, putting a onerous restriction to protect one property that hinders all these other mixed-use properties. That, that was my concern for bringing it up.
Commissioner Timmerman?
I agree with that and I don't think for a project at the magnitude of a hotel that five thousand seven hundred dollars is onerous. Right, yeah, my family's bank account it is, but for a large-scale development, it is not. And, and I do see one, maybe two other properties on the map, including the one on County Road forty-two and County Road five, I believe, that we had previously changed to mixed use. Is that correct?
You're thinking Burnsville Parkway and?
Was it this?
County Road five, yeah. Where the, the Valley View.
Yes, I believe so.
The, of Valley.
Right. You know, that's another one where it's close to residential areas and we've done some work already in this area. So there are some areas I think that hotels would be fine and great and there's others that I don't think fit the, the current zoning. And so my, my proposal would be to make that a conditional use.
What do other cities do, Sarah? Do you know off the top of your head?
I do not.
Can you zoom back out, please?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
One small comment. The way that our mixed-use zoning district is designed is that it was Um one small comment, um the way that our mixed use zoning district is designed is that it was meant to be. Areas that are planned unit developments, you'll find that many of our, if not most of our mixed zone properties are planned unit developments. And they may already have conceptual stages based out if they are vacant land, uh as to what those properties may be. For example, the case of um where there was some neighborhood concern over the the apartment building that was approved last year. Uh the southern portions um as an example are outlots, so when those do uh come forward for further development. Uh they would go before the planning commission to be replatted. Um and make the conceptual stage of their planned unit development a development stage. And deviations from that concept plan that was approved would would be an amendment to that planned unit development. Which comes before the planning commission as part of the public process.
Commissioner Timmerman.
I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to move that the planning commission. Recommend to the city council approval of the proposed ordinances that we've discussed tonight. But changing under the planning considerations, um that hotels in a mixed district would be a conditional permit.
Is there a second? Or is there another motion? Commissioner John.
I'm trying to think if there's any downfall to doing that at all um before moving forward with that. Uh we did talk a little bit about how much it would um cost some a developer to do that. And I know hotels is are something that we'd like to see uh in the center village. I wouldn't, I would hate to do anything. To limit growth in that area and that's that's where I hesitate right now.
I agree with you, Commissioner John. Um I know that there have been grumblings from other developers. Stating that it may be slightly, am I mistalking Sarah? About how some developers may say that it's difficult to get in. And go through this process, that the costs are too high, whatever the complaints may be.
That would be something that they might say, yes.
You know, and that that additional cost may defer some developers. Commissioner Robert or Timmerman, geez, I'm sorry.
Um the one thing that I want to respond to you um is that. We're also assuming that the zoning around the Burnsville Center Village stays mixed use and isn't. And we don't create some type of new zoning structure like we did in Heart of the City, which will transition to uh hopefully transit oriented development. But at the same time, we're not saying that there's a restriction on there being a hotel built there. We're saying that we would like to see you bring that rendering forward and we would like to, as a city. Make a decision on if that is the project that fits within the vision of that area. Whether that's the Burnsville Center area or any of these other mixed areas, it gives us a little bit more. Discretion in making those decisions and that's the reason I think that instead of blanketing this. We make it an approved conditional use and then we make those decisions on case by case basis. Again, I mean, a developer will argue that, you know, an application process adds time to the project. It adds five thousand dollars of expense to the project. Um these are. Tens of millions of dollars uh in development projects and in the grand scheme of things, it allows the city to keep that type of. Oversight on these areas and on these projects and that's why I think that this is good to have it as a conditional use.
Commissioner John.
Yeah, I wouldn't argue against that at all and I I understand your hesitation, especially with the. New mixed unit or a mixed use property that we just approved. However, I'm looking at the bigger scale, we're looking at you got two properties, two smaller sized properties that are mixed use. And then you have all these other larger ones that we're trying to redevelop as we go. And I know there will be concern about. Putting up blockades from development of any kind whatsoever and that's why. It would be, it would be great if we could, if we could separate out those two little uni- those two little properties and say, hey. These are conditional use, all the rest are okay, but that sounds like it would be more work than what it would be worth. I I completely understand with the residential areas and and people not wanting. Tall buildings in their neighborhoods, et cetera.
What was staff's intent with that change? Just to kind of group everything together?
With the change to add hotels as a permitted use?
Correct.
It was uh due to the fact that there were properties that had hotels on them that were rezoned and that were concerned. That they were being uh rezoned to a a district where they were not a permitted use. And because Heart of the City, it is a permitted use in Heart of the City.
Commissioner what?
I'm just gonna chime in just so you know what kind of where I'm at. I I don't have enough, I'm still relatively new here, so I don't have enough history on. Some of these other areas and so I, my kind of default is to defer to the staff recommendation. So I, that's kind of where I'm at. Thank you.
So there is a motion on the floor. Is there, would somebody else like to second or make another motion for their discussion? Commissioner John.
I hate to kick the can down the street, but could we table it for a, get more. Understanding of what the ramifications could be or is um. Or or do we need to push forward here and make a decision on whether or not we want to move forward this motion?
Could we just approve everything and then table this one section of it, or how would that work?
You could. Recommend that that portion of the ordinance be removed from the proposed ordinance. And then that would be your recommendation to the city council and at that point, uh staff would work. Assuming that that recommendation is approved by the city council, staff would work on bringing this item back. Because we would want to rectify the issue and and for the record. Make sure that it was a closed topic.
Okay, great, thank you. Commissioner Timmerman.
Um I want to come back to one thing you said and that was about, you know, wouldn't it be great if we could have a mixed A and a mixed B? That that's kind of what we're doing by saying that this should be a um conditional use. We're not saying you're not going to be able to build a hotel on your property, we're saying the planning commission in the city would like to see some more detail about that. So that gives us the ability then to look at specific areas in the city and make those decisions. I would not be opposed to. To withdrawing my motion if this is. If this particular piece of the proposal is continued to the next planning commission. With more detail about specific properties that have been changed in the last couple of years. That already had hotels and are affected and properties that are currently mixed. That don't have hotels, that could now have hotels. Um I think that would take significant amount of time and research for staff and I think that again. We're we're just taking a little bit of the responsibility on our commission to look at these projects. Depending on where they pop up within the city and on the city and the city council and the city staff to look at those projects a little more closely. And again, I'm not saying. Anything about um stifling development or bringing in tourism into the city. What I'm saying is we're kind of coming around this in a backwards way with some properties that we've already approved. With some neighborhoods that we've already heard from and I I just don't feel comfortable in approving this the way it stands. So I, I will tell you, I'm willing to withdraw my motion, but I want to know that. We can at least come to consensus that we'll review this at our next meeting.
Yeah, I'd say propose another motion, I'd withdraw and propose propose another motion.
Commissioner Timmerman.
All right, I would like to withdraw my motion and I would like to put my password in so I can read what I'm moving. Do you have it on the screen? All right, I would like to recommend that the planning commission recommends the city council approval of the proposed ordinance amendments as presented today. Excluding the one on mixed uh development and that includes hotels and I would like to. Continue that particular item for more research by staff to bring back to the planning commission.
I'd like to second that motion.
Any further discussion? So my only comment is real quick is if we do make it a conditional use permit for those hotels. We'd have to review every single one of them that are going to be coming to the heart of the city. We'd have to review every single one of them that would come into um by the Burnsville Center as well, not just. Cause you know, like you were saying, Commissioner John, trying to look at the bigger picture, not specifically to. Two properties. You know, um I I. You know, as a planning commission, I view our goal is the grander scheme of things, not necessarily specific properties. Commissioner Timmerman.
I agree with that. The comments about Heart of the City, they already have hotels that are permitted. So that we wouldn't look at those.
Right, but if new hotels came in, we would look at those. If if it went under conditional use permit. If new hotels came.
City is zoned differently than mixed unit. In the heart of the city, correct me if I'm wrong, but part of the city can already have hotels as an approved.
That's correct, Heart of the City is a separate zoning district. It is a type of a mixed use uh development pattern and style, but it is a. Its own separate zoning district.
So then I misspoke, so I misspoke, so all those ho- you know. I'm trying to, thinking grand here, so I'm thinking all these hotels that are going to be coming in for the Burnsville Center. We would have to review every single one of those, even though they would meet all the guidelines because they would be a conditional use.
Unless we rezon that particular area like we did with Heart of the City, which is a potential down the road too.
Yes, um but I'm also trying to think of staff's time as well and that is a huge undertaking. Um especially since the twenty forty comp plan just went through, that in my opinion, that would have been the time to rezone something so big. That big piece of a property for something like that, um because that. Document would have to be updated, all these documents would have to be updated. It's it's a huge undertaking and it's an expensive undertaking. As well for two properties.
It's it's not just two properties, it's every mixed use property. We would have the ability then to determine in the Burnsville Center area is a great example. It's currently zoned mixed use. We would get the opportunity then to take a look. Are these the types of projects that we want in that area? And so it actually gives the planning commission in the city a little bit more constructive input in those projects. But which I think in Burnsville Center area is certainly something that. We want projects to move forward, but we also want to conceptualize them and have them be the vision of Burnsville that we want and we can play a part of that then.
And I agree with the with what your statement, but we're just talking about hotels right now. We're not talking about any other project that's coming in. You know, we're just talking about hotels, so. We would have to review every single hotel application that would come in. With a CUP. So and I, in my opinion, that is a lot of work, especially if. It's going into that type of property, you know, cause you can imagine hotels in the Burnsville Center area. You know, and that's a lot of staff's time, that's a lot of our time reviewing that, that application. For something that should be in there. Any other comments? Commissioner what?
Could you summarize the motion again? Cause I think the next step is to vote.
Correct, so it was to recommend all the, all the approval. But withdrawing the hotel so we can reexamine that at a later date. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay, nay. Motion carries. So then, let's see, we're on item five. Of the agenda to hold a public hearing for the city of Burnsville to amend city code title ten zoning. Chapter seven, general provisions, section twenty six, general parking and access requirements in chapter fifteen. Multi-family residential districts, special minimum requirements. Section one, special minimum requirements in R three A, R three B and mixed with residential districts. To incorporate changes to off-street parking standards resulting from the parking. Study presented by Beth Elliott from StanTech.
Hello commissioners, it's good to see you again. Um I'm here to uh walk through the parking study. Which uh is essentially an ordinance update. Um and you have seen much of this information before at a couple of previous work sessions, I will go through all of it for the record. Um and discuss what our final recommendations were after your feedback in another council work session. So this is actually a tool that you have not seen before. Uh our presentations to you previously were uh in PowerPoint. What you're looking at right here is a story map and uh this is actually up on the city's website. Um it's uh a kind of a, if you don't know story map, it's kind of a cool to- tool, uh ArcGIS Online uses it. It's their tool, but it's a great way to bring the public through um online engagement when I'm not there to explain it to them. And so we thought that we would walk you through that as part of our presentation tonight. So as you know, we are reviewing the the parking ordinance. Um and this is based on a direction from uh city decision makers and city staff. Based on the fact that the ordinance is uh very old, the parking horse is very old, out of date, uh based on current standards. Um it was designed for uh a very auto dominated suburb where cars were large and there was no other way to get around. And we know that is changing here in Burnsville. Um the city's policy and national best practices have changed quite considerably. Um and over the last fifteen years, including housing density, shared uses, I think the conversation you just had about. Uh whether to allow more hotels as permitted uses in your mixed use districts is a perfect example of this. Um and so uh I wanted to make sure and I I think all of you know this, that we were charged with looking at. The parking ordinance outside of the heart of of the city districts. And so all of the changes that we have made um are applying um around that area. But not including that area. Uh you have another consultants who is doing uh that uh ordinance update. So project goals, um bring an outdated parking ordinance in line with current best practices. Reduce regulatory and administrative barriers to development for both city staff and property owners and again, that is part of the conversation you just had. Offer increased flexibility when it is in line with city goals and policies and implement the twenty forty plan. Uh particularly this uh land use policy five point five. Reduce impervious surfaces by working with landowners to provide adequate parking to meet user demand without building an oversupply of parking. to meet user demand without building an oversupply of parking. That is, uh, an art, not a science, um, which is why we did a lot of best practices analysis. So as you know, we, um, uh, the last time I spoke to you during work sessions, we talked about the fact that we met with city staff during, um, uh, a kickoff meeting last summer. We did an extensive best practices analysis that I will talk about. Uh, we are doing online engagement right now, um, and we have drafted an ordinance and we're here, uh, tonight for the public hearing. So based on, um, our knowledge of some of your peers and many cities that city staff, uh, requested that we review, here is a list of a lot of the local, um, uh, cities that we evaluated, uh, for various elements of the parking ordinance. And, um, I wanna be very clear about, um, you know, St. Paul is a different city than Burnsville. Minneapolis is a different city, St. Louis Park. Everyone has their own differences. You wouldn't wanna take someone else's parking ordinance and just supplant it, uh, in Burnsville. Because, um, they might have problems with their own parking ordinance, right? It might not be a good fit for you. Um, but there were little things, little nuggets from all of these cities on how they deal with various issues that we heard from city staff. We also evaluated, uh, best practices in a variety of your national peers, and this is a list that we derived from city staff. And of course, um, we wanted to look at industry standards, so we looked at, uh, primarily one of our biggest sources was the Institute of Transportation Engineers. That's how, um, a lot of developers use this as a tool to calculate parking for their developments. Um, and, uh, it's usually based on a suburban model, which fits very well with Burn, with Burnsville's, um, environment. Uh, we also looked at Urban Land Institute, which has more shared parking models, and the American Planning Association. So the major topics of change, uh, adjusting minimum parking standards, and I'll go through each of these in turn. Um, require parking based on per bedroom versus per unit counts. Uh, sharing parking among uses, in Burnsville you call it joint parking. Um, regulate, uh, regulator, regulating parking for a change of use in existing space. So what do you do with a retail space that converts from one thing to another? Uh, considerations to reducing parking requirements, if certain conditions apply. Uh, accommodating guest parking in new residential uses and design standards. So let me go through each of these in turn, and, uh, please, uh, feel free to ask me questions as I go along to clarify. Um, so as we looked at a very typical list of, um, primary uses in Burnsville, that's the table you have, um, on the right. We evaluated all of those uses. Now, this isn't every use in your zoning code, but it's the standard uses that we would generally look at in a parking study like this. Uh, almost all of them are above I T E standards. And again, I T E standards is, um, uh, for a traditional suburban development. Uh, so becau, so the mere fact that almost all of these uses in this table were, um, required more parking than I T E industry standards is a telltale sign that your parking ordinance is out of date. Uh, because I T E stays up to incurred best practices. And so that to us was, um, a clue that we, uh, can look at a broad brush stroke in reducing a lot of these uses, uh, parking standards without having an impact on the built environment in Burnsville. Uh, so, uh, the best practice is to adopt industry standards and offer more flexibility in the parking code. Um, I will say that you have, I think, three uses that have maximums. Uh, shopping centers, large office buildings, and hospitals, I believe. Um, yes, there it is down there. So our recommendation is to bring your minimum standards in line with I T E industry standards. Um, and also maintain those three maximum standards you have in your zoning code. Per bedroom versus per unit parking standards, uh, it is actually a unique si- uh, situation that you're, uh, for your zoning code, um, compared to your peers, that you, um, have both, uh, per bedroom and per unit requirements in your zoning code. And generally, that is more confusing than anything else. Uh, industry standards are to go by a blanket per unit, uh, standard. And so as we looked at your peer cities, they all, uh, fall in line with that more, uh, the peer, uh, the per unit requirement. And they also require as a best practice, one enclosed parking stall per unit, which you also do. So our recommendation is to eliminate any reference to per, uh, bedroom parking requirements, and instead recommend a minimum parking standard of one point five spaces per unit plus, um, a quarter space, uh, per unit for guest parking. And then to continue to have the required one enclosed parking garage per space. Joint parking, um, as I mentioned, this is a term that, uh, Burnsville uses. Um, um, as a reminder, uh, I have the specific definition in the staff report, but this is, uh, what I would call lateral sharing of uses versus multiple uses in a mixed-use building. Um, so Burnsville currently allows joint parking between property owners. Um, but, uh, staff asked us to explore the tools to memorialize that type of, uh, uh, requ, um, um, uh, agreement. So right now, you require a deed restriction, and as we started to look at your peers and cities, uh, nationally, a deed restriction or other recorded agreement is a standard practice. Um, so we are actually requiring, uh, we are actually recommending that you keep a recorded mechanism for these type of agreements. So there's three options that we are, are laying out with staff. So the other, the one option is just to keep the deed restriction. Uh, another one is, uh, to allow applicants to apply for the, the CUP or a PUD, and then that being the recorded, uh, tool of Dakota County. Um, and then the final option is for applicants to provide their own documentation of joint parking, but then also filing that with the county. So all of these are options that still, um, include filing, uh, some sort of recorded mechanism with the county. Change of use, uh, this is something that cities are dealing with all over. Uh, you have a retailer, the retailer, um, retail is changing. We are all hearing about how retail is changing. Uh, this, uh, is make, uh, this, um, results in some, um, uh, unique spaces that need to be used. And the example we have here is Athleta. A retailer moves out. Uh, a bar or brewery or a coffee shop moves in. It's a much more significant use that requires much more parking. And so we wanted to make sure that the city has, again, kinda similar to the deed restriction, had some mechanism to trigger, uh, city evaluation of, uh, a change of use like this. So the city does require already, the city has a, a certificate of occupancy. So what we've done is make sure that this is, um, a component of the parking ordinance, and it's referenced in the parking ordinance as a required element of a change of use. Uh, any change of use will need to, um, uh, I'll get a certificate of occupancy for that change of use. And this allows the city to review any incompatibilities, uh, look at a site plan, um, see where parking is going to be used, all of that stuff. So it is a mechanism, a triggering mechanism for city staff to review administratively. Parking reductions, we did, um, we also talked to, uh, a few property owners and developers as part of this process. And I will say, one of the things they like best about Burnsville is the flexibility that is offered, um, in the zoning code. Uh, many, uh, developers mentioned the proof of parking as an example of what they really like. Proof of parking right now only is allowed for institutional uses, uh, business uses and industrial uses. Uh, many cities have some sort of tool to reduce parking. It happens in many cases similar to Heart of the City where you have transit available. Maybe there's on-street parking, they do a travel demand management plan. Uh, we are recommending that proof of parking still be used as a primary tool for the city, but that gets expanded to all uses, including residential. And guest parking, uh, as we started to evaluate your guest parking requirements, it was clear that they, uh, go above and beyond any of your peers. And this requires, um, an extensive amount of parking, guest parking in residential buildings. So your current city code requires half a spot per unit for apartment buildings, um, and townhomes, in addition to any of the required, standard required parking. Uh, peers generally, um, uh, require a quarter space per unit, that's the industry standard. So we are just recommending that you, um, um, uh, are in line with industry standard. And finally, uh, I, let me just show you a little bit. This is actually, uh, this, at the end of the story map, we asked online for people to take a survey. We did get twenty-two people as of last week, the fourth, who, uh, provided us feedback. There's some information in your packet about that. Um, I'd be happy to answer any questions, um, or clarify any of our recommendations for you.
Great, thank you.
Yes.
Commissioners, any questions? Commissioner John?
Yes, first, thank you so much for doing the study. I, I really appreciate all the work you put into it, and the references to Burnsville just kinda personalizes it. You guys did a really good job on this.
Thank you.
And I was, uh, blown away by the, the different parking mechanisms and all the different, you never, never imagined all these different lists of parking, um, requirements for the different businesses and things. It, it really, uh, changed my mind on some things with, with parking. One question I have was, uh, you talked about recording mechanism and having to file that with the county. Why the county, not the city?
Uh, the, the, Sarah, you had, you perked up. Did you wanna answer that?
So, uh, yes, I can answer that. So, um, when you file documents with the county, it's filed against the property record, and it's reviewable based on the actual property designation. Uh, when the city keeps documents on file, it's not, um, viewable by anyone unless they, uh, request it through a public data request, um, on file. With the county, it would be part of the title work with any land sales. So let's say that someone purchases a property, and at the time of closing with the title work, they would know that they are purchasing a property that has a shared parking agreement, and that they have either access to someone else's property for shared prop, for shared parking, or that someone has access to theirs.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Commissioner what?
Um, no question, just a, a comment. Thank you for excellent series of presentations and, and really great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Okay. I will open the public hearing at seven twenty-eight. If there's anybody wishing to speak, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Thank you, my name is Khyree Duckett, K-H-A-Y-R-E-E, D as in Delta, U-C-K-E-T-T. I am, uh, Government Affairs Director with the St. Paul Area Association of Realtors, not a Burnsville resident. Thank you, Madam Chair, for allowing me to come today. I just wanted to let you know who was the weird guy sitting in the back at a planning commission meeting. But more than that, uh, working with SPAR, uh, we're reserving comments at this time on this, uh, ordinance change. But wanna thank you for your consideration, uh, and all the work that's gone in. And we do look forward to continuing to work with you on this and other smart growth issues. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, seeing that there is no one else wishing to speak, the public hearing will close at seven twenty-nine. Commissioners, any more discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we recommend that, um, to city council approval of the proposed ordinance as amended, ordinance amendment as drafted.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Motion carries, and this will be heard at the February eighteenth city council meeting?
That's correct. Thank you for all your feedback along the way.
Thank you. Okay, so the last item on the agenda are updates. Commissioners, any updates? Staff?
Uh, yes, so at your last planning commission meeting, uh, the first meeting in January, uh, there was a public hearing for a, uh, application by Northland Development for a planned unit development for a, uh, one hundred unit, uh, active senior living building. So that was approved by the city council. The, uh, next planning commission meeting on February twenty-fourth is canceled. So your next meeting will be March ninth. Uh, we do not have a draft agenda prepared at this time for that meeting. Um, and then, uh, you may have been following some of the city council work session discussions recently. So at the January city council work session, January fourteenth, city council did direct staff to move forward with providing additional research on further properties in the city that could be rezoned to mixed use. Um, so this would be a, a large-scale, staff-led, uh, potentially a consultant-involved project, um, that would, it's gonna be a, a longer-term, uh, project, not associated with a planning commission work plan. Um, these things, uh, can take time. As you may know, that twenty forty comprehensive plan was adopted in July of last year, and the Center Village Comp Plan Amendment is still ongoing. So, uh, this next change to rezone properties like this would be, um, a comprehensive plan amendment as well as a rezoning. So there would be a lot of discussion as part of this, a lot of research, and then, um, community involvement and property owner involvement. Um, so if you want more information about that, you can watch the January fourteenth, uh, city council work session meeting. Um, so just kinda stay tuned for more information on that. Um, you also may, uh, read in the minutes from, um, their all-day work session that, uh, signs, uh, may come back into discussion again. Uh, it's very unlikely that that would have to come before the planning commission, and it is more on the policy side rather than on the, uh, zoning ordinance side. But if you read anything about that in the minutes or see it, that, that may come up. So, uh, just so you're aware, and then that is the last update that I have.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners, anything else? Motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed say nay? Motion carries, we are adjourned.
Thank you.